Good evening, and welcome to the, what is today? April 25th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council. We'll start today's meeting, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance. So I ask Councilmember Sandin, please lead us.
My pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we begin tonight's meeting, I just want to make sure we go over a few of the protocols we have in for council as normal. For those who are wishing to speak tonight, we'd ask that you please fill out one of the yellow speaking request cards that are on the side table and complete those and hand them to our city clerk, Chris Rankin. Please try to get those in before the end of the staff presentation. So we have those and the staff has time to complete theirs and we have time to gather cards and get public comment. In addition, I will, as those come up, I'll just take them as I get them in no particular order. The other part too is when you come to speak, please be respectful of speakers. Try to remember, all of us are neighbors and part of the community and be respectful of their time. No boos, no applause, just try to be as respectful as you can so we have a good public discourse. And secondly, a reminder to those who are speaking, we do have a timer on the side there that Chris will be managing. So as you start your presentation, you have three minutes and we'll manage that. As the timer goes off, I ask you to wrap it up so we can move on. Other than that, looking forward to a good meeting and we'll get started tonight with item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. These items are for public comment and as council, these items may are not on the agenda so the council is, can't debate these or discuss these further, but we do welcome comments. So we have a couple of requests tonight. First up is Jaclyn Noble.
Good evening.
I'm Jaclyn Noble.
Sam Brinkley, City of West Sac Recreation Supervisor.
So we understand that the city is proclaiming May as Older Americans Month and in that vein, we are honoring our senior citizens. And so the Active Aging Program in partnership with BBCAN is hosting its sixth annual Senior Resource Fair and it's on Friday, May the 4th, from 10:00 to 12:30 at the Community Center. And the goal of the Resource Fair is to provide information that will enhance and support our seniors' daily living, leisure, interests, activities, that sort of thing. And so we, excuse me, there will be free blood screenings courtesy of Walgreens, there's going to be free vouchers for the Vision Care Plan, Vision Service Plan, for free eye examinations, and there will be information booths, various healthcare providers, nonprofits, and county agencies. So the city is also providing door-to-door shuttle service, which is free. And we have a telephone number, which is 916-617-4620, so that they can make reservations. And at last year's event, we had an attendance of over 150, so we're pleased and hopeful that we will get more this year. We've left some brochures on the table. They're in Spanish, English, and Russian.
And again, we would just like to extend an invitation to all the city council members and all the attendees as well. And feel free to pick up a handout on your way out and hope to see you on May 4th.
May 4th.
Thank you. You just didn't call me on, did you? I'm kidding.
Friends.
Okay, no. Thank you for the invitation and thank you for the invitation to the event and that's next, a week from Friday, right?
A week from Friday, yes.
A week from Friday.
Then to 12:30.
And is there information on our website that?
There is. On the Community Center page, there's a full list of details, so go ahead and check that out.
Sure, okay. So we'll encourage the public that those who aren't able to get to the table tonight, get the information, go to the website, get some information and I'm sure all of us will, and the city will be sharing that on social media and we'll try to get the word out as well. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Irene Eklund.
I'm here to talk about parking permits. My family owns a home just behind Rayleigh's Corporate and in the past, we've always gotten parking permits and they were unlimited until you moved or whatever. And now the city has implemented where we have to renew our parking permits every six months and we have to pay a fee to fill out the form to renew our parking permits. And I'm a little puzzled because we paid for the sidewalks in front of our house, we paid for the curbs in front of our house that we're parking in front of, and last year or the year before, we had to pay for 30 feet of replacement of the sidewalk because it buckled. Why do we have to pay to park in front of our house? Why aren't we like Sacramento if they are the ones that are enforcing the parking, which they do diligently? Why aren't we giving resident permits to the people that are actual residents? In Sacramento, you get, in most areas, two permits per household and I don't think it's too much to ask because we do pay our taxes, we do pay all of our other city fees. I think if you're a resident and the purpose is to keep people who are going to the River Cats games from parking in front of your house and taking parking, then there should be resident permits. Just my suggestion and I'm a little upset if you can tell. And I'm a senior citizen, too.
Thank you, Irene. Irene, just a clarification, your property, your house is behind?
Rayleigh's Corporate on 7th Street.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's no other requests to speak on public comment, right, Chris? So we'll move on then to council communications. This is a section of the meeting where council members can state some of their communications they've had in outside committees or boards or other activities. So councilmember Sandin, want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Along with the mayor, with Mayor Protam and councilmember Orozco, I participated in the Metro Chambers Cap to Cap Program in Washington DC and I served on the Flood Protection Committee along with Mr. Greg Fabin from the city staff. My meetings were with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, House Appropriations Subcommittee on Energy and Water Development, the Office of Management and Budget, National Water Race Conference, and also congressmembers Matsui and Vera. And the meetings were all to advocate for funding for our levy program. Mr. Fabin and I advocated for our program, of course, and then along with several others in our region, to make the case for funding the whole system of flood protection projects needed here. And we also wanted to keep our project top of mind and in front of the agencies and lawmakers. I think the tenor this year was much more positive, in my opinion, than it was last year in the program. As soon as we got back, the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on April 19th and we entered into an MOU with the County of Solano, Solano County Water Agency, RD 2068, Yolo County, and the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency to cooperate of matters related to the Yolo Bypass and the Cache Slough Complex. So now we're in a, we have an MOU with all those agencies to work together. We also approved a contract for environmental support services for the South Port Levy Improvement Project. We authorized our board chair to enter into an agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to establish credit eligibility for advanced work on our big project. And we also heard an update on the Pioneer Bluff and the Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan, the Bulkhead Alternatives and the Stone Lock Facility Reuse Strategy. And so you're all aware, there'll be an open house, a public open house on May 8th about this and then the project will be taken to the Planning Commission before coming to council and I think we'll have a couple of opportunities to discuss and to see this plan. And we also, at Wasafco, we also heard updates on the South Port Levy Improvement Project and upcoming construction activities now that it's spring again and it's building time. This past Saturday, I attended the city's Earth Day Program and I was pleased to see the Guide to Preschool Sustainability Program and Curriculum that was being showcased there. And this, as you may recall, was a collaboration between the city and Waste Management, but it was just nice to actually see it. It's done, it's out, there were things that you could touch and see and hear about, so it was really exciting to see that. Finally, earlier today, councilwoman Orozco and I participated in the city-county two-by-two with Supervisors Vegas and Rexroad and the city-county and Lafco staff. We discussed the Lafco Reclamation District Recommendation, the Countywide Transportation Ballot Initiative, which is now delayed, as you may recall, a potential county services open house that was offered by Supervisor Vegas. We talked about traffic issues on River Road and we received a homeless program services update and the new mental health service that is located in the county cluster of offices is really quite busy, so it's just open, but we got an initial report. And then we also asked to learn more about animal services and county plans for future discussion about those services. That's my report.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Johansson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Today, I, along with Aaron Laurel and Eric Will of the city, represented the city in accepting the $300,000 grant from the EPA Brownfield Grants Program. And what this is for is to allow us to do some assessments along Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock. As you know, there's some wastewater, historic wastewater treatment plant there, petroleum tank farms in the old dock. So this is going to be augmented with funds from other sources to really get those assessments going, which is going to help develop out the area. It was a, I think it was a sixth grant we've received in 15 years on those issues, so it was a good turnout. Sacramento was there as well. I mean, it was in Del Paso, Del Paso Heights. Alan Warren was overseeing the city of Sacramento. It's a good event. And today, the Clean Air Funds Committee of the Air Quality Management District met and essentially, funds come from different sources to fund clean air projects. And once a year, grant applications go out to the jurisdictions represented in the Air Quality Management District to, for various projects to help clean air awareness and that type of thing. So West Sacramento, least recommendation to the board for the next meeting is going to be for $17,750 for a bicycle and pedestrian wave finding pilot program, which is, will work with the NEST program and create messaging and maybe more artistic type of signage along the bike and pedestrian routes. So there is a unanimous decision to include that. And also, this Chamber of Commerce, West Sac Chamber of Commerce came in with an application. It was actually for a lot more than the grant even allowed, but Chris White represented the chamber there. And the committee agreed to allow the Chamber of Commerce to redraft or maybe have a more focused grant application for the next board meeting because I think they've got a grant from PG&E that they're going to use. So the request was to add another $7,500 to that. So because they didn't have a grant application completed at the time of the meeting today, we're going to just bring it to the next board meeting, but it looks like it's, there was good support in the room for that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Ledesma. I, too, attended the Cap to Cap Program. It was my very first time, so I didn't know what to expect, but I came away with a lot of great information and was assigned to the Workforce Development and Education Team along with my colleagues. I wanted to pick something that was pertinent to West Sacramento and had an opportunity to work with some fantastic educators and people that spanned everywhere from higher education to early childhood and many businesses that were stakeholders in the education community. And we had an opportunity to meet with several congressmembers, including, in his own skin, Ami Vera. We went with the Office of Congressman Tom McClintock and the Department of Education in a variety of different departments. Essentially, we talked about the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Many of us know about this with respect to West Sacramento. The Yolo County Children's Alliance is actually utilizing funds from that program to help employ youth and dislocated workers ages 16 to 24. And with a collaboration with some of our local businesses, including Lenises and Carols and Liberty Tax, are putting people who have had difficulties being employed in businesses so they can get lifelong skills and work experience will help them along their path and the continuum of job training and apprenticeships. I had an opportunity to really brag about West Sacramento there. I talked about our high-tech culinary academy and, more importantly, our West Sac home run, which it seemed, everybody found very intriguing when I talked about all the bases and I was grateful to have our city manager and Parks Director on hand to provide me instant statistics right before a meeting with Ami Vera because I was able to really cite all of the wonderful outcomes we are having so far with such an, in such an early stage with this program. And I know that that's, even though it's my first time presenting it, I know that my colleagues have had that opportunity in the past and probably have met with the same enthusiasm, but I found that fantastic. Finally, yeah, to finalize, we met with the Yolo County, excuse me, Yolo County Cities set West Sacramento two-by-two today and the only other thing, councilmember Sandin covered everything, the only one thing, and you might have mentioned it and I may have missed it, but I understand that Supervisor Vegas is planning to have an event where certain stakeholders and people who are interested in our community could take a tour of the facilities and partially because many people know that there are county resources out there, but they just don't know what they can access. And we're really hoping to disseminate that information and educate our community so that way they know they can access, you know, free or low-cost mental health services and at what time. I mean, many people, including me, didn't know that the hours were Monday through Friday from 12:00 to 9:00 as opposed to the traditional 8:00 to 5:00. But we learned something every day. We just need to make sure that everybody in our community knows what they can access and what's in West Sacramento at their disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll report out as well. I as well attended Cap to Cap last week and it was one of the more productive, positive trips that I've been on on behalf of the city and advocating for our region in general, but the general mood of the Congress especially was markedly different as they have adopted their budget last month and there seemed to be, I'll use the word, some bipartisan agreement on how Congress wanted to spend the money. And so it was really interesting for me to sit back and usually there's maybe some hard sells to one party or another, the minority majority staff, but there seemed to be a general awareness, really a lot of awareness around a lot of the projects I'll talk about in a second, but agreement where we're going and even some advocating, like, go do it. So I sat on the Transportation Committee. Obviously, we have a lot of transportation infrastructure projects that the city is working on. In fact, on the nice color brochure, there's a map of all the projects in the region and West Sacramento is highlighted in five of them. And those five are the streetcar, the I Street Bridge Replacement, the Broadway Bridge, the Yolo County, which is, we're part of, the rail relocation project, as well as the I-80 Improvement, HOV Improvement Project that's being talked about. So some very big projects that were part of the region that everyone advocated for and there was a general agreement from Congress around the importance of those and really, I walked away really, not a feeling I've had before going to Congress where there was, yeah, go do them, what else, tell us what we can do, tell us how we can help. The big meeting for us, at least for on the transportation side, was with OMB, Office of Management and Budget. The White House side, because of the issue of the streetcar, we do have federal funding lined out in the budget, so it was kind of curious to see how the White House and administration would approach us with any questions. They were fine. They felt they know all about the project, want to make sure we were learning from what other cities are doing, making sure the cities and Secog and all the other parties that are involved are working through the technical issues and the due diligence we're going through now. But it was a very positive meeting. Felt very confident leaving that and as well going to two additional congressional offices, the Subcommittee on Highways and Transit and then second meeting with the Committee on Commerce, Science, and Transportation. Both those meetings, the staffs were keenly aware of these projects on the majority side and advocating us to get through them, any issues with FTA, anything else coming on board, they wanted to know. They have projected out even another, the next year's budget. To a degree, they signaled that, you know, priorities will probably remain the same. Congress has come together to kind of understand these funding priorities that the Congress has laid out, which boded well for us as we kind of progress on through all of our projects, knowing, having some predictability in those processes and what to expect is hugely important. So again, the OMB meeting was hugely important, myself and councilmember Steve Hanson from Sacramento attended that along with Mike Lucan from YCTD, who did a terrific job walking through our technical part of that, as well as Henry Lee from RT, who's our lead technical person. It was a really productive meeting and to get the support as we did was important. Our last meeting was probably the more interesting one, which was with the Bipartisan Policy Center and on the National Transportation Policy Committee. There was a lot of interest in all the projects that seemed to be in West Sacramento and Yolo. But we ended up having a 10- to 15-minute discussion around the kids' home run. For some reason, workforce development came up, so I'm going to ask somebody from staff to follow up. They had asked for some information on that, that center does a lot in workforce development. So they wanted some information. I was in the room with one of our communications partners who's working on the project as well. So we were both able to articulate where the program was going and they were just really, quite frankly, forward that we're accomplishing all this in West Sacramento and wanted to refer us on to other people in that office so they can do some more research on us, which is good. And they're usually a signaler of those types of best practices that they could spread on a policy level through Congress. So I thought that was a really interesting meeting. But overall, I think, you know, my colleagues can attest, it was a very positive meeting. Again, I can't remember the last time I kind of walked away from those meetings feeling very, that everybody seemed to be on the same page, almost everybody. And there was a lot of positive cooperation throughout the region in support of what we're doing and I was supporting a lot of what the region is doing. So again, I thought it was a really good meeting. Anyway, so those are our reports from Cap to Cap. Any other council communications? I have nothing else to report. So we'll move on to item 1C, which is council appointments. Can I show my age for a moment? Council appointments, reappointments. We do have a note from the mayor on some appointments he is asking the council to approve and I'll just read them off and after that, we'll look for any comments or motions. So the mayor has suggested for the Planning Commission, Ryan Harrison, be moved from alternate to regular member. On the Environment and Utilities Commission, he has proposed Laura Sheridan, go from alternate to regular member, and Jamison Parker, go to alternate. And then on Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Services Commission, he has recommended Daniel Clayton from alternate to regular member and Sasha Horowitz to alternate. So with that, any comments, questions, or motions from council? A motion from councilmember Orozco? And the second from councilmember Johansson. We have a motion and the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed? Thank you. We have those new appointments to the commissions and thank you to the newly-minted commissioners for their service going forward, an important part of what we do here. So we'll move on to now the consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have items 2 through 11. I'll ask at this time if the council has any, they'd like to pull off or for further comment? Item 9? Councilmember Johansson? Any others? Okay, item, let's take on item 9 first. This is consideration of application to the AARP Community Challenge Grant Program and appropriation of $10,000 in Measure E for matching funds.
Hi, John. See, I'm totally supportive of this. I just, when we're moving through this, you know, there's basically three types of transportation, like a bike, scooter, and via or transportation. I've just, I'd be interested in seeing kind of this age group that's, you know, kind of not focusing so much on age but on ability. I think we mentioned this in the Age Friendly Commission, we're going through that Age Friendly Report, that, you know, 50 to 65, you know, because someone who's 60 may not want to ride a bicycle, someone who's 70 may want to ride a bicycle. And, you know, so it's more a question of their ability and rather than strictly age. And I think when we start focusing too much on age, we, I think we start bracketing people and if we, and if there's some publication out there, look, this is for 50 to 65-year-olds, then, you know, it's going to discourage some people from using it because, you know, just the old folks are using it or whatever. So, you know, maybe try and keep it, it's more like a fluid, a range of ability, I think. So it's not really an issue right now, but as you're going through and hopefully we're successful in getting this grant approved, I'll be looking for that type of thing as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? I said a quick comment on item 10 and I appreciate staff, John, you again, sorry, on the update on the legislation. There's a lot on the legislative front and as well coming up on ballot measures. And I'm going to ask that somehow that we kind of, I don't know how, as the months tick on towards both June and then November, I kind of really start watching these come through. These are fairly impactful. A lot of these are really impactful to not just our city government, but to city governments all through California, which is why the League of Cities has been super-involved in a couple of them. But these are really worth us kind of keeping a really close eye on. A lot of us, I think all of us here on this day is, we all have day jobs and we're caught up in our day-to-day jobs and families and whatnot and so having some way to sort of track if this is really happening, especially the ones that are ballot measure-driven that could be impactful to our budgets and how we, just having, I know a couple of them said you'll come back, ask you for next steps. Look forward to seeing what those are if they start to hit because they are pretty drastic, so. But thank you for the briefing on this and let's ask, we can kind of get periodic updates as we move forward. Thank you. All right, so if there's no other comments on the consent agenda, I'll look for a motion or any other comments. Councilmember Sandin moves.
Second.
Councilmember Orozco, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent order passes, thank you. We'll move on to our One Loan Agenda item for tonight, which is item 12, Public Works. Consideration of the I Street Bridge Replacement Project Update and Supplemental Cooperative Agreement with the City of Sacramento.
Good evening, Mayor Protam. And members of the council, my name is Jason McCoy, Supervising Transportation Planner, Public Works. The item before you is consideration of the I Street Bridge Supplemental Cooperative Agreement as well as a request for the city staff to pursue funding of up to $25 million toward the Secog Regional Local Program as well as some other opportunities that will be available that I'll explain a little bit more. A little bit background on the project. We've been before the council, the TMI Commission, and also before the public through community meetings a number of times. The initial kickoff meeting was back in June 2014. Since then, we've actually done a lot of work on this project and continue to do a number of work toward the preliminary approval and environmental document preliminary engineering phase. As you see here, I've got a number of dates that are before you, including, most recently, we have the draft environmental document that was released. We received comment on that from the public and we have since then have continued to work on the final environmental document, which we're anticipating is going to be released in the coming next few months and at that point, it would be before the council for final review and then certification to, from the city of Sacramento. With me today from the city of Sacramento is Jesse Gothin, he's the project manager and my counterpart on this project, so he's also going to be available to answer any questions you might have. Next slide here is an overall map. This hasn't changed too much since we were really kicking this off back in 2014. This- hasn't changed too much since we were really kicking this off back in 2014. This shows you the basic limits of the project, and I'll go over them. The existing I Street Bridge is highlighted here with the arrow. As part of this project, those items that are shown in red are the approach structures that are slated to come down after construction of the new bridge, which the Coast Guard is referring to as the C Street Bridge, which connects C Street and West Sacramento to Rail Yards Boulevard in Sacramento. The project itself includes a number of other improvements in order to facilitate construction of the bridge that would include levy improvements in West Sacramento, along Second Street area. We also would be including improvements along C Street that has actually gone to council before you, before, as you might recall, to look at the configuration of C Street. We've also got approaches, at the end of the approaches, I've lost my arrow here, there we go, at Second Street, where we've got a Second Street relocation in order to continue accessing the properties once they are disjointed from the existing Second Street based on the location of the bridge, and an additional Second Street access that would be continued on at that location here where the arrow is highlighting. So there, as I said, we have been before council a number of times, and there's been a number of design approvals that have been obtained from city council. Those include, excuse me, include the type selection report that was presented to the council, I believe about a year ago. That included a report that discussed why there needs to be a vertical lift bridge due to the length of the span. There's a, that's a 270-foot horizontal clearance, and that's per U.S. Coast Guard requirements. We also had an extensive traffic analysis that was done, and the two-lane bridge configuration with center median was approved. That was after extensive consultation with FHWA and allowance from them to allow us to actually widen the bridge and make that a participating reimbursable cost. And that also provides a little bit of flexibility for us in the future in case there needs to be any kind of lane configuration changes. The bridge itself is going to feature 12-foot wide sidewalks on both sides. That was again, based on intensive negotiation with FHWA. They was originally approving six-foot sidewalks. We also have six-foot wide bike lanes with two-foot bike buffers. That's consistent with our Washington Realized Plan, and it also provides more multimodal access for those who are going to be using the bridge, and the connectivity between the two 12-foot multi-use trails in, both in West Sacramento and in Sacramento. The bridge is also going to feature 12-foot streetcar or transit-ready lanes, so the structural integrity is going to be included in the bridge that would allow for a streetcar in lane. It also will allow for transit vehicles that can currently cross the existing I Street Bridge to be able to cross. And then we also have our approach configurations at C Street, which I discussed had been to council previously, as well as the access to the Second Street parcels, which are consistent with the Washington Realized Plan, and the streetcar station that would be located along C Street. These are the GeoMecaturk Approval Drawings, actually, were presented to council last year. This is just showing some of the different improvements that are, were already brought before city council. One of the things that we're currently looking at that was not in previous drawings was some of our mitigations that are going to be part of this after doing the environmental document and reviewing some of the mitigations in there. There are some of the issues that we've seen over by Burgers Brew. We have leased parking, which is on the north side of Burgers and Brew, which was accessible to the business on the, directly on the other side. Some of that parking would have to be removed, and as part of that mitigation, we're looking at providing an access road, a cul-de-sac access road on the south side of Burgers and Brew. So that's currently being explored by Economic Development. And Katie Jacobson is actually in the crowd. She's the, managing the I Street Bridge Deck Conversion Project, so she can answer some questions about that, as well as some of the economic development implications of the bridge. So as part of this project, back in 2017, you may recall, there was an article that was published in Sac Town Magazine that suggested that the project should explore a design competition. There have been some meetings since then between the City of Sacramento and West Sacramento, as well as meetings with Caltrans and Congresswoman Doris Matsui to explore some of the financial implications that would be associated with that. After some consultation, we've decided as the two cities would be able to pursue that, involved in that discussion were members of council, as well as our city manager and the City of Sacramento. So, as part of that, we went ahead and first started discussing some of our budget implications, particularly with Congresswoman Matsui and with the Caltrans Director. Currently, the cost estimate, and I have an asterisk by that because our last cost estimate was done in November 2016, and we're soon going to be doing another cost estimate very soon. The current costs put the bridge at $158 million. Of that, the participating federal funds, that means reimbursable costs are $139 million. And then our local matching funds would be $18 million, split between the two cities. And it should be noted that anything that we do that is not a functional element of the bridge, according to Caltrans, would not be considered a participating cost, meaning that if we put in some aesthetic design improvements that don't have functionality directly tied to the operation of the bridge, those would be borne on the two local agencies. So that means a lot of aesthetic improvement, more cost for the local agencies. So I wanted to kind of break down what we've been doing as part of this competitive selection process. Back in January 2018, we went ahead and formatted how we would approach this design competition, as well as setting up an architect selection panel. That selection panel consisted of members of the Riverfront JPA and alternate members of the JPA. Sacramento also has the same membership as the Riverfront JPA. At the time, we had Mayber Protem, Councilman Ladesma, who was going to serve on that, had a meeting conflict. Councilwoman Sandin stepped in, as well as Councilman Johansson, who are, have both been in the first meeting of that advisory group, excuse me, selection panel. We've had four statement of qualifications that were received after solicitation was sent out by the prime consultant for the I Street Bridge project. Those are both domestic and international, total of four firms. After reviewing those proposals, the mayor and Councilwoman Sandin were both there at that first meeting, it was narrowed down to three participants. So those three participants have since received an invitation to submit proposals. As part of the framework that was developed, those proposals can be up to three different designs that each firm can be submitting for consideration. Those designs are going to be reviewed by an ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee consists of residents of both cities that have backgrounds in design. They're going to be providing their input in the form of presentation as to why this meets the criteria for the bridge selection. And then based on those different selections and the presentation by the ad hoc team, the selection panel will then select who the winning architect is. We've also set aside some funds for those who are submitting, for the three firms. There's an award of $25,000 stipend to those who submit but do not get selected, and then the one that gets selected is the winner, and they don't receive a stipend. Also before you on this evening is a supplemental cooperative agreement. This is between the City of Sacramento and the City of West Sacramento. The agreement was first executed in March 2014 to cover the project approval environmental document phase. At this time, as I had just described, there's been a few changes that have happened, including this architectural selection process. We are moving close to approval of the environmental document, but in the original agreement, we had a budget estimate of $200,000 in staff time. We are just reaching up to that point, and we are looking to have approvals to extend that to $250,000. It still remains within our original council-approved allocation of $350,000. So we're not requesting additional budget. We're just requesting to move into this agreement because the wording specifically said up to $200,000 in staff time. In addition to that, in order to stay within our $350,000 allocation, we negotiated with the City of Sacramento to reduce our share of the administrative costs associated with the project. So right now, we're splitting costs 50-50 for ineligible staff expenses for the City of Sacramento. We've negotiated that down to 25% for City of West Sacramento, to 75% for the City of Sacramento. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And we also, this extends the contract through the end of the PAED phase. We would have to be coming back to the city council in order to move on to our next phase. This is the schedule for the project moving forward. As I had mentioned, we're getting close to the adoption of the EIR and certification. We're expecting that Caltrans will approve the EA and Fonzie by July 2018. We're going to be moving into the final design, which is going to, we're anticipating starting in June 2018 through the end of December 2019. And then we'll be moving into construction spring 2020 to wrap it up by the end of 2022, in which time we'll be able to open up the bridge. One thing to note, the approach structures that I had mentioned before that were in red, that would be coming down due to some mitigation, they may have to remain for a period of a year, potentially more, in order to get some of the bats that are there, and there are some threatened bird species that may have to be relocated. As part of this presentation, it was asked that I do a presentation on the deck conversion project and schedule. I did mention that Katie Jacobson is here from Economic Development, who can answer more questions about this, but I've got the basic schedule here before you. The project was a grant-funded project that we had received from Caltrans through their Sustainable Planning Grant. We received about $199,000 from Caltrans, matching our local funds, split between the cities of Sacramento and West Sacramento to pursue the project. Caltrans approved the contract, and we moved forward back in January 2017. We went ahead and formed an ad hoc three-by-three committee for reviewing of different designs and project goals that consist of both Sacramento and West Sacramento participants. We've been participating in data collections and stakeholder coordination since about January 20, wrapped up in January 2018. We just recently had some conceptual designs, initial designs presented to staff for comment. Those are going to get refined, and then it's anticipated that we'll be bringing these back to the city council to review. In Sacramento, things are done a little bit different. Their city council does not review conceptual designs. It's approved at the staff level. And then we're looking to get the entire feasibility study adopted in September 2018. With fingers crossed, we'll be pursuing some funds so that we can continue moving on this project. I explained the recommended action for this evening. Staff is, has just presented an update to council, and we're seeking approval for the supplemental cooperative agreement and approval to pursue grant funding up to $25 million for the SECOG Regional Local Program in the 2018 and future funding cycles that, that ask may be divided into two award timelines. We're also potentially looking to submit for, and I have to read this off because it's new to me, the better utilizing investments to leverage development. That's the Build Program. Tiger is what everybody kind of knows, knows the, that grant funding pot of money as. It's now known as Build. So there is a potential for us to pursue funding through the Build Program from the Trump administration. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions of?
I have a quick question, just to clarify. Jason, when you talked about those connecting structures that you denoted were in red that would be taken down, what's going to go in their place? How are we going to utilize the, or access the?
Well, if you tie into, so, so the approach structures themselves, if they were to come down, they would just come down. There would be no longer access to the upper deck of the existing historic I Street Bridge.
Okay.
We don't, we at West Sacramento don't want that to happen, as well as the City of Sacramento, and we're working together as part of the I Street Bridge Deck Conversion for Active Transportation Project. We need a new name for that. And that project would allow us to first work in the middle of conceptualizing and determining the feasibility of this. But moving forward, we'd be designing and constructing approach ramps, new approach ramps, to connect to the upper deck of the historic I Street Bridge. The upper deck would also be reconfigured, so it would be for bicyclists and pedestrians exclusively, and the deck itself would be revamped, so it's one flat, continuous decking, instead of what you see now, very narrow sidewalks lined with the metal corners and then a very narrow roadway.
Very narrow.
So, yeah, very narrow. So what we're hoping to do is, is time this accurately so that by the time we have the construction of the new bridge completed by 2022, we have completed the design and environmental process for these new approach ramps, as well as any park features, et cetera, that would be happening at the same time, and then constructing these while we're demoing the approach ramps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johansson?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think a similar question, just what the disruption of traffic would be. It sounds like neither side of the river wants that to happen over an extended period of time, because it is a critical link to getting out of town, particularly on the north side of town. Now, in terms of the Riverwalk, it wasn't really shown, we don't really have an overlay of the Riverwalk system, park, or the trail system, but I'm assuming it's going to go under right where the new levy improvements are going.
You know, I can actually, if I could call Katie Jacobson up, she's actually been working on that item specifically, and she could probably provide more details on that.
All right.
Good evening, council members. So, right now, we're designing a Riverwalk North project, we're calling it. It's being, the design and permitting and environmental is being funded with CDBG funds. So essentially, that will actually go in place ahead of the I Street Bridge replacement. So we'll be constructing all the areas between the broad boat ramp and the I Street Bridge, and then ultimately, they'll come in and connect with the new I Street Bridge, which the connection is not underneath the structure, it will be on top.
So you have to go up and over. I guess there's going to be some elevation there, even at that point.
So it will be both, actually. So on the upper portion of the levy, you will connect directly to the new I Street Bridge, but we'll have a lower portion underneath the new bridge, so you could pass underneath and then come back up. The trails themselves, the paving won't be conducted as part of the I Street Bridge Replacement Project because those, the paving of those trails is not a participating cost.
Right.
But, as part of this.
It's not funding it with Riverwalk, no, right?
Correct.
Got it.
All right. And then I just wanted for Jason, for you. So this issue of aesthetics, and that if we do anything that's aesthetic, then it's basically on our own dime, basically. So how do you, how do you work that? I mean, obviously, we're looking at functional aesthetics.
Right. So there's things that you can do that would fall within Caltrans requirements for the highway bridge program, determination of something being participating. Lighting, for instance, is, is participating in there, so.
Even if it's decorative lighting?
It depends on what you would consider decorative. So if you were to do something that was outrageous or could be perceived as outrageous, then it could be challenged by Caltrans. But I think that there's a wide swath that, that we could fall within, that would fall within decorative and being functional at the same time. So we have to kind of play that, that field a little bit and make sure that anything that we're moving towards, we work with Caltrans to demonstrate why it is both aesthetic and both functional.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I'd like to see that pushed, because I think, you know, I think that kind of structure should make a statement. Of course, you know, we've got a cost consideration, but, you know, to try and see if we can get to the limit on what's considered functional aesthetics and then kind of reduce the cost of both sides. And it sounds like you've got the folks in relationship with Caltrans, you'll be able to work through that.
Yes, we've actually been very, what I would consider very successful in, in pushing that envelope, as I said, and received a lot of allowances that were initially not considered. That was the additional center lane and a little bit wider bridge configuration, the 12-foot wide sidewalks, the bicycle lanes with bike buffers, as well as levy improvements, which was significant because initially levy improvements were not considered a participating cost. cost. There's also other things that we're looking at doing that are mitigations, as I mentioned, for relocation of the parking and potentially some of the improvements on C Street that we're going to continue to push for, that we're hoping will be determined to be participating costs later on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sandin?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation, and it was really an honor to serve on that review committee, that first part. 2022 cannot get here fast enough, as far as I'm concerned, just because we really need a safer crossing, and as evidenced by a recent accident on the I Street Bridge. I read about a bicyclist, and so, you know, I think we really need to keep moving eyes wide for, eyes wide open, and I know you're doing that. With regard to what's in front of us tonight, that slide you had about the actual supplemental agreement was really helpful. I was trying to figure out what had changed. So just a request, because I know it looks like it'll come back to us one more time, is perhaps just a grayscale where there might be changes, so that we could just pull that out. I was, I was trying to read it really carefully again. I hadn't seen it for a while, and I was like, what might have changed? So those are, for us, I mean, those are, I think, some real significant changes, and it has to be accurate. So just for, maybe it's just for me, but I would, that would really be helpful.
Well, I did include that slide because it was a little difficult to tell what has changed from one agreement to the next. So I'll try to highlight a little bit better in the future.
That'd be great. Yeah, just, it was, it was great to have that slide, though, because you answered, those were my questions. So thank you for that.
You have another question?
I just have one more.
You go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. One more clarifying. I'm really excited about the six-foot and the 12-foot widening. Just for context, though, how much wider, how much larger is this new bridge going to be from what we already have?
To give you an idea, Tower Bridge sidewalks, I believe, are 10-foot wide sidewalks. So this would be another two feet wide, plus there are obstructions on the existing Tower Bridge, so you could see the difference there. With the, the existing I Street Bridge, vastly different. I believe that we have three- or four-foot sidewalks. Somebody may correct me. I haven't gone out there to double-check, but it's very narrow. Someone who does bicycle cross out during May is Bike Month. The lanes themselves, I believe, are nine to nine and a half feet each. So if you have a larger vehicle, it's not uncommon to see your mirror get smacked by somebody else's mirror. So the difference between that and 12-foot travel lanes with a center median, plus the buffers on either side, it would be much easier to use, much more convenient, and much more conducive to both the flow of traffic and to multimodal access and transit access. You will be connecting between Rail Yards Boulevard and the, you know, the blossoming Washington District. So it's going to become a very well-traveled bridge, so it'll be nice to actually have transit vehicles be able to cross.
Okay, thank you, Jason. You know, I agree with all the comments, especially Councilmember Sandin's. It just, people have asked kind of when this bridge is going to happen, because it is one of the few crossings that you can take over if you're working or bringing your kids back from a base, whatever, from on the other side of the river. And it's a very narrow bridge, and I think that just, you're reminded it was, it wasn't built for cars, it was built for rail. It was built 100, over 100 years ago now, and they didn't even have cars at that point, let alone wide escalades or whatever America drives today. So it is necessary, and it's an old bridge. And for, I don't think there's any, we've seen or heard of any safety issues with that bridge, but time, you know, wins every game. So we've got to, I'm glad we're keeping, pursuing this, we are, we have to keep our eye on the ball on this. And I know we're running two or three concurrent projects with this, and the debt conversion and levy improvements and everything else. I know this is a very complicated project to get done, but you're doing a great job. Appreciate the presentation, because it is all about sequencing these to get back. I'm glad you are looking at the federal funding options. And I open, that's one of the things I did take away from when I was in DC last week. They were very much signaling the programs they have available, and it was made clear to me by James Corliss at SACOG that California's only received one federal Tiger grant to this point. And you can, you can assume whatever, speculate what the reason is for that, the administration has it, but they seem to signal those are there for the taking. And if we have other needs, the Tiger program are the one you brought up. So we should be pursuing those, if any of them can apply to this project or the surrounding projects for it. And then regarding the aesthetics of the, of the bridge, I, we do want this to be, we don't get to build bridges every century, at this point. We're trying to build three or four right now, right, considering the enterprise and the bike bridge. But this one's on, has funding. So as much as we can work with Caltrans on defining what would make the aesthetic, but make, I'm more interested in getting the bridge built. So as much as we can, we can work with them on that span you talked about, to get the aesthetics right. We want to encourage a world-class design within the constraints we have. That's what, at least I'm interested in, to make sure we stay on path, because Councilmember Sandin's right. I hear it all the time, that bridge is scary for a lot of people to drive through, scary for pedestrians, and it's just a very antiquated way to cross the river. And our economies are so intertwined now, we need that bridge crossing. So I'm very pleased with the work that's been done. I'm very pleased with that we're continuing to work on the debt conversion project. I know, talking to the local businesses there, they are so excited for the work that's being done in general in the Washington neighborhood. They're excited about the possibilities of the Riverfront opening from where they sit at Third Street and facing east, being able to get a clearer view or something thereabouts to the Riverfront. There's potential business owners that are looking to activate spaces that haven't, we haven't thought about activating. And you're right, there is a real energy emerging out of Washington, and, and so we need to be bold in how we progress that way, because they are super excited, the residents there. You can go, I'm sure it's been busy the last few days at Devil Make Care Ice Cream with the sun out, and, and there's the pizza place going to X Store. The barber who I see, they are extremely excited about this work that's going to be done and can't wait for it. So appreciate all the work and the city's focus, as well as I thank our colleagues across the river for their focus on this. It was nice that we got an agreement, too, by the way. I did note that, on our share of costing out on this. But good work in this. I know we have something to actually vote on tonight, is agreement on, on the change in the, in the agreement, right? So, all right. So any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jason, very well done. Oh.
If I could, Mayor Protem and council, you know, we've got four major projects with Sacramento, and we, you're exposed to our staff quite a bit in terms of the expertise that they bring, but, you know, Jesse didn't speak tonight, but we've had issues, Denex has brought issues to me that, whether it be funding, the cost-share agreements and so on. I always go back and say, Denex, why don't you work it out with, you know, the Sacramento staff? Generally, it is Jesse. If necessary, we can elevate this. But, you know, we, in the last several years with your two city managers, we really haven't had to talk about these projects all that much, because you've been able to sort it out at the staff level, and we really appreciate that. I mean, we know this doesn't get done without a lot of cooperation on the Sacramento side. It's a huge project for you with the Rail Yards, but we definitely appreciate your, your expertise and your willingness to work with us, and we'll get the same bill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. So in excess, any other comments from the council, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Roscoe, seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you. Item passes. That concludes our regular agenda tonight. We'll move on to item 13A, council calendar.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Couple of items that may be of interest to you that are coming up. This Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00, is the YED Spring 2018 Summit, and that'll be in winters, and the topic is county-wide transportation capital improvement plan and what's next with regard to funding. There'll be speakers on, from a variety of areas to weigh in on that topic. Then on May 3rd, at 5:30, is the Mayor's Annual State of the City Address. And May 11th is the Bright Park Phase Two Grand Reopening at 10:00 a.m., followed by a barbecue at 11:30.
Excellent. Thank you, Amanda. Next, 13B, city manager report, anything to report?
Nothing, other than thank you for those who took time to go to cap to cap. We're getting good feedback that the delegation really nailed it in terms of highlighting the priorities, and I think all of our projects and our requests benefited from that. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Johannesen for taking time out to represent us at that EPA Grant Award Event today.
That was a big deal. Yeah. Thank you. City Attorney report? Nothing to report. Staff direction from city council members, any?
I have the next item.
Okay. And then future agenda item requests by council?
Me.
Okay, usually these are submitted, we try to, tried to submit these-
I've actually spoken with the city manager, so-
Okay.
Maybe it's staff direction from city council members, so-
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. We received a request, all council received a request on April 21st from the General Manager of RD900, requesting either a two-by-two or a three-by-two between the RDS and city council. And so I just wanted to request that it become agendized on an upcoming meeting. So I apologize if I, I mentioned this to the city manager and thought I would bring it forward. So I don't know if it's D or E, so it's one of those.
It's E, then.
It's E, okay.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and ask city manager to look for slot, coming agenda. Any other items? Okay, item F, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Johannesen, seconded by-
Second.
Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everybody, have a good night.